It is six thirty. It's been reset from the normal first one fifth month. And we are so happy to be joined by the Personnel and Finance Committee. Where I am. So this is my favorite committee. What we're doing tonight is actually to be two meetings at the same time. We will do the role of both meetings. Any conversation will be, you got to be invited. It's not the executive section that are at the end, these are the main items. I see it. It will have, will it break? Will we start it and have break? So that's it. Alright, so that, okay, you guys have a call to order?
Here.
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 Mr. Sence.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
And I will call the Personnel Finance and CIP Commission to order.
Ms. Yana?
Here.
Mr. Lewis is here.
Here.
Ms. Paul?
Here.
Ms. Paul?
Here.
Alright, great. So, um, you definitely go for minutes first?
Yes, we'll do that. Did you guys have a chance to see the months before here and now? They were just sessions. We will have to call them, approve them. And we don't need to approve any of the death penalty.
Well, that's, yeah, should we disable, uh, agenda?
And we'll go ahead and talk over this one and discuss twenty twenty five budget.
Thank you, everyone. Um, Personnel Finance. We are here to discuss the twenty twenty five budget. Um, first, I'm going to do a couple of reporting items for the third quarter. So we have an idea of where we stand up until now. So the budget timeline each year tries to look the same. Um, in July, we met with staff. July and August, uh, we met with council members and the mayor to talk about priorities. Also, in July and August, we met with Personnel Finance. I think they've seen this presentation once or twice. I'm ready, um, to get their input on everything. September, October, we worked to finalize the budget and the budget documents. Um, normally, we would like to do the presentation to council a little bit earlier than this, but I was being off, we're a little bit later. Um, and then December or end of November into December, we will have the first readings and second reading, um, hopefully with passage of the twenty twenty five budget. So we're ready to go January first. So just a couple of items. On the general fund this year, revenues are strong. We have collected over one hundred percent of the estimated income tax revenues. Unless then we have an unforeseen significant expenditure, the end of the year balance should be a bit higher than we originally projected. However, the balance was still, uh, a little bit lower than the previous year that was budgeted. The transfers out are the main expense for the general fund. The encumbrances look a little high. Um, they about, the encumbrances are mostly for inspection for the developments. Those are really large numbers that carry over from year to year until the developments are completed. So that is taken into account into the balance. However, you know, last year was taken into account to the balance. So it's hard to get that true balance number when we collected those revenues. Um, but we haven't paid those bills quite yet. So altogether, there's about nine hundred thousand encumbrances. Um, and two hundred fifty thousand of that was from twenty two, twenty three that just haven't been closed out yet, but we didn't collect revenue for this year.
So do the encumbrances sit in the general fund? So is it actually a three million dollar balance? Or do they, is that inclusive in the two month? It's a three million dollar balance, so they actually sit in there?
Yep.
So I, I would probably put that like off to the side, you know, so when you just go left or right here, uh, that's normally, people are adding it up, assuming the difference between the left to right is that we'll have more expenses than revenues the last month or year.
That's correct, yeah. This year, we did have, um, the former water sewer operations fund rolled into the general fund and, um, those expenses have been able to be handled by the general fund. So it was good to see, this is the first full year for that. Park Fund campground revenues are strong, even with limiting year round camping. We're still about, we're a little under previous years, um, but we're still a strong revenue. The Parks Department continues to be self sustaining through that revenue. The rec fund still needs a small transfer in from the general fund, but that, it's a pretty strong balance for the park fund. Police Fund, again, the revenue includes transfer in. Um, the remaining expenses are largely salary based. And this year, we did hire a cadet, um, and had salary increases. So we increased that transfer and now the fund is able to handle all of that. Similar with Street Fund, um, the revenue looks high, but it includes a transfer in. The remaining expenses are largely salary based. We did have one recent resignation, um, and one upcoming retirement. So we just closed the position and made two offers, um, to try to get a little bit of overlap before the snow starts this year. Um, but people have accepted the offer and they're in their background check process now, so we hopefully get those, get them on board before the end of the year.
We plan Thursday, right?
Yeah. Have plows ready to go. We'll talk more maybe later in the council meeting about everything we accomplished this year. Um, but since we're talking budget, I wanted to make sure that we did touch on all the money that was spent this year equated to about two point one million in capital money. That includes a lot of grant funding, um, so it wasn't just village dollars. Like I said, we'll go in, we'll do a year in report, um, but we completed the shelter house recently, we moved the depot. Maple Street Bridge Engineering is complete and ready to go out to bed in the spring. We finished the Madison Meadows Playground, did the clock tower and the streets paved, paved, rebuilt the salt barn. Um, the Bigelow Avenue parking lot finished up. The dog park is engineered and ready to go out to bed as soon as possible. The aquatic study is finishing up now. Um, and then the West Avenue U S forty two intersection engineering is getting really close to finish, then it'll go out to bed next summer. So we spent a lot of money this year, um, but again, a lot of it's grant funded, a lot of its carryover projects into twenty twenty five to make this budget fairly, fairly simple. Just a reminder on the Art Council goals that you've all set and we revisit every year to increase connectivity, focus on public spaces, smart planning and growth, resident safety and satisfaction, and develop and uphold our organizational professionalism. Just a quick refresher. With those in mind, um, we created the proposed twenty twenty five budget. A lot of numbers, um, I sent this proposed spreadsheet out a little bit ago. Um, I didn't want to include in packet because it is still subject to change. Um, I don't want any, it to be construed as final versions. However, if you want to take a look at it, these are the really high level. I won't go through it all, but, um, we estimate property taxes or, uh, income taxes, the one percent to still be strong next year. Um, we budgeted, I think, a ten percent increase? Around ten percent, because that's what we saw from last year to this year. Um, the rental income is great. That's from things like the Church Street Building. Uh, the construction inspection numbers are included in the fines, licenses and permits fund. Tardis for services is things like trash, that's the majority of that number. So those types of things are really pass through. We've taken them out and we pay it to local waste. It looks like revenue, but I'd like to split it out so you don't think it's able to be spent on anything but what it's designated for. Oh, this is kind of small, sorry. Uh, expenses, we do have a separate land acquisition line item, uh, to start building up that fund for next year. Um, it could be, we don't have anything in mind right now, so we wanted to just put a placeholder to make sure if we could to start building up that fund. Personnel makes up the large, largest amount over about a million dollars. Um, and then the transfers out is actually the largest, the one point eight million dollars. I'll go into more detail about that in a second. Everything else pretty much remained the same. Um, we saw pretty much the same numbers in like consultants and, you know, uh, and our legal community events from last year to this year. So we didn't see any major increases in this.
What's contractual?
Oh, contractual is things, like, make sure I have it.
Let your bill, gas bill.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. One-off appraisals that we might need or, um...
In the development section fees, do we charge for those out, back out? Or are those all?
It's the past due fund.
So it's just passer, yep, comes in, comes out, yep. As I figured.
Yep. As a placeholder, we're above that number this year, um, but a lot came, a lot got started this year. So I'm not sure if as much, like, things like Marin Reserve, they might pay upfront. So it looks like a big number, but the next year, you don't see anything, so.
So land acquisition, we propose leaving it in general fund, not, uh, the other, uh...
For now, we have to create a fund for that, right?
Capital fund.
Yeah, so we can put it in there and then we can transfer it, um, at a later date. We wanted to just go ahead and make sure we have a placeholder in there.
Uh, do we make a decision on the capital piece of that or, I don't know what?
It has to pass legislation to approve the fund and it has to wait state to get their approval once they give their, um, blessing on it. Maybe they create it and then transfer it out and then create the fund.
But do we make a decision on doing that versus leaving it in capital? I guess. Kind of open, open question to all of us. Not that we have to decide now, but...
We like that idea. We'll figure, you know, not to put a large amount in it, um, put it something reasonable. Once it's in the fund, it's unable to come back out. Um, but we do foresee over the next couple of years, several opportunities that that money could be used for.
But I would want that fund also save our money too.
Yeah.
So, so just earmark it for it.
Yes.
If you create the fund and we don't utilize it, there's no negative, right? So just, I, I would, my guidance would be, let's go ahead and start the process creating the fund, because worst case scenario, we just leave it empty. And that's one T cross.
But it's also nice that it's there.
Yeah.
If you have, it does...
My guidance would be, let's do it and just get it, yeah.
Yeah, but my, my argument was, and leave it in the general fund and we have a hundred thousand dollars there, it's going to be hard to really let it grow and say, oh, yeah, now we have eight hundred thousand dollars. Eight years of, well, if we have eight hundred thousand dollars, like, oh, the pool needs a new pump, something blew up and, you know, caught fire, then, then we live, gone. That was only my, my...
You made London cringe.
You know, or if like someone's bike gets stolen.
Spin recovered.
Eight hundred thousand, like...
I, I agree, create the fund.
Yeah, never see.
Um, transfers this year, we were able to, um, bump down the street fund a little bit. Had a higher balance. Um, we were extra conservative last year, so, um, we were able to handle everything. So we were able to take that number down a little bit. Um, police with the passage of the levy, it offset that additional transfer that was needed this year. Um, the rec fund is pretty standard and the pool fund is about the same as well.
Will the, uh, police levies start collecting right away or does...
February will receive the first payment.
And then when would Madison County kind of go through the reassessments?
I believe Madison County just did.
Just did, okay. Cool, thank you.
So that drop in police fund is the difference of the police over, or it's a little bit more than that?
It's...
Yeah. And the street fund, we talked about the sidewalk program, like...
Opening that in capital.
Okay, that's on the street.
Right, this is for operating, for salary and some contractual things.
Okay.
Uh, so here's just a little bit more detail about each of those funds. Um, so you can see the expenses, it looks like the transfers are double counted because they're in the, the revenue of the funds and also the expenses of the general fund. It's not the clearest, but just so you can see, um, transfers versus revenue of each account. So what's included in our general fund operations budget of twenty twenty five? This year or next year, we're hoping to update the comprehensive plan. Uh, we're working on the RFQ right now to get that out first of the year, try to get some proposals and get that underway in the future. We expect that to be a pretty significant cost, um, so that's in there as well as a land use update.
We place in there camp? Few, Paul?
Uh, I think within eighty thousand.
Eighty, thank you.
Um, we are increasing our cybersecurity measures. I, our IT firm has given us a proposal to, especially based on what's happening to other communities around the area, um, really making sure that we're secure, we're good to go. Um, we have backups, we are protecting resident data and all of that. So we are moving forward with that plan as well, but that is, comes out a little bit more of a cost for IT, of course. We're proposing, um, a new income tax software. Our income tax administrator works really hard, um, he's a very important piece of our staff. He is struggling with the software, it's not updating, it's not doing exactly what he needs. He spends a lot of time trying to retrofit data, um, whereas if we just get him in the software than a lot of other people use, he'll have an easier day to day process.
Our curve software doesn't operate files and that's just a huge...
That's right, yes.
...reference to it like...
Yeah, we, we should be able to use that.
Exactly. Our curve software is promising, it's promising about three years. So he, he did three years, so it kind of come, may have not, so...
Yes, he finally would be a huge benefit. Like I said, we're beginning that land acquisition fund, we'll just have operations when we have the fund set up. And we were continuing to focus on training and development fund. Um, our staff attends a lot of free training through the year, um, but we also have a couple people working on higher education. We have, um, several people going to local conferences and they, it just remains really beneficial about seeing what everybody else is doing and getting that education. Couple of other notable items. Staff will be having a health insurance provider change next year. Um, always painful, never wanted. Um, the current provider was proposing twenty five percent increase, which would have been bad for our budget and also the employees' budgets, our, their paychecks. Any increase we might have seen would be offset by this. We are changing providers, um, there, it would be a five percent increase as opposed to the twenty five. Our agent is attempting to lock in the rates for at least one year, so we don't have to go out again next year, um, but we'll see, but...
What's the percentage split of village?
Nine percent.
And is that consistent with the old, uh, supplier? So that would be the same for the...
Still HSA, still same deductible and all that kind of stuff.
See no difference, it's just... But all doctors, we verify all doctors, hospitals, providers, we...
Thank you.
Um, something we had a lot of success for this year was the quarterly mail newsletter. Um, it's not a huge cost, but it is, it adds up, so we do have a budget for that as well to keep that going next year. Twenty twenty five capital projects, um, I should have probably just a couple of slides. But we have a lot of them, a lot of them have been in the works for at least a year, some two years. So this budget has been pretty easy to put together because we're finally going to see the construction of several items. Um, the depot plaza, we received a four hundred and one thousand dollar grant that went out to bid and will be on council's agenda to award with contracts signed date of the first week of January. Um, with the grant covering at least the entire plaza, most of the tap fees, probably some accessory items like benches and trees and stuff that we might need. We're currently evaluating the building improvements and how we want to handle the marketplace, retrofit of that building. Um, and then we'll begin splash pad engineering next year for construction the following year. So we real, we were really happy to see that plaza bid come in. Um, and then Justin's working on making sure we're getting all the grant agreements lined up. The Bicentennial Park Engineering, um, we had the kickoff last week, um, but we'll be owed, or we'll owe that money next year. And that project will actually get going. We received fifty thousand dollars in grant funding for that. We may have, um, it may go slightly over that, so that is in the budget, but it shouldn't be too much more, depending on the scope.
So what's the, what's the target construction for that, maybe two year?
Probably more than that. Um, engineering for these, when ODOT's involved, usually takes at least a year now. Um, and then if we get additional grant dollars, it'll probably be, I would say, two to three years.
Okay. Are you getting right, they'll, they'll be right away takes, right, for that? Add a year?
Yeah, unfortunately.
It takes a year to go through right away with ODOT. When I do any of our plans, we have to have the plans done and right away takes a year before our first project can even get started. So if there's right away, it'll be a year from when the plans are finished, not when the plans start.
We're learning that with the Maple Street Bridge project. It has taken forever and it's a, seems like a very small project. Um, but that is finally ready. When is that going out to bid? Do you know? Off the top of your head? I think it's, it's, a sale is April, I think, so it should be soon. Um, ODOT let us know last week, they're giving us an additional hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we had, I think, five seventy, five eighty, um, so we'll have about seven hundred twenty thousand in grant funding received now and being responsible for the other portion. That was extremely helpful and makes a big difference in our budget. Uh, the forty two West Avenue intersection, we're also learning about, a lot about right away in that project. Um, like I said, should be good to go next year. We have town crosswalk, um, we recently, or we're still waiting on that grant agreement to come through. That should be next year. Street paving, uh, we have the normal amount, um, encumbered for that and we are hoping that if we get the Shepherd and Converse reconstruction project, we can roll that in there, use that as more of our matching dollars on that grant application for, um, through OPWC. The Dog Park construction will take place next year. We find out Thursday if we will receive the OPWC Clean Ohio Grant for the Raver Farm. Um, so that's, we'll be responsible for that money next year. Um, and then Public Works would like to purchase a backup. So like I said, this isn't the most, uh, these aren't new projects. We've been talking about them for a long time, but they've finally come to fruition as well as lining up the next couple of years of things in engineering.
Yeah, and this slide right here is the exact reason why I always want the PNF, uh, group to be like looking long term and like have that four, like five year horizon. Usually by the time we get to this point, right, like, there's grant funding received on a lot of these, like, what, what, there's not a lot of decisions to be made. Um, there's some obviously, but not a ton. So, uh, I continually wanted to see that long term planning and that's why we have that on the, uh, agenda for this evening, because I want to, I want to know decisions need to be made or what decisions, if we, if we make them lock us in through twenty seven through twenty eight. But on these, like you said, I, I'm pretty familiar with everything, except for the backup.
You can't use it.
What's the tiny one up there?
Shepherd and Converse reconstruction. Uh, we've submitted the OPWC application and we're fairly certain we're going to get that, um, but we will be responsible for the additional costs. That engineering will probably take place through next July, so the construction would be after that.
You said the Maple Streets could be bid in April?
I think the sale date is April, so before that.
Try to get that spring, because that's when the contractors are hungry.
Yeah, hopefully.
Would have been nice to get it this fall, because I know they're really biting at it right now.
What's the sale date?
I think that's their, what ODOT means their award date, like, they've sold the project. Um, so just a little bit of background, um, capital fund, what the budget looked like last year versus this year. Spent a lot of money out of the capital fund this year. Um, we are taking that number down a little bit next year, um, which is good to see to build that account balance back up a little bit, um, as well as getting a lot of the grant revenue coming our way next year. Those are the transfers out, not the total amount, not the total expenditures. So that concludes capital. Um, yeah, I really look forward to the longer term planning and how we're lining up the next couple of years. We have the, an outline, we have several projects that'll take the next couple of years. We have a few grant applications that are, we're waiting on and then they'll help fill out those blanks too, but, um, that's why Mr. Conley's here tonight, talk about some other things that we don't necessarily have planning for, because we don't have the, the expenses planned for. So for twenty twenty five, a few organizational updates. Um, since we've finished Madison Meadows Shelter House, we finished the Heritage Trail Shelter House, so we've, um, we're working on the depot and have hoped to have that open in the summer. We're, we've been trying to think creatively about our growing portfolio of facilities and how to make sure that those are maintained adequately. And so we'll talk about that in a second, as well as some cost of living increases, staffing, um, and then where we see our needs are. So for facilities management, um, we are, we talked a few months ago about potentially a new job description. Since then, some staffing changes have been made. Um, and we believe that someone on our staff is perfect for this type of position, um, so it would stay under Public Works. Uh, they would have their weekly, monthly schedule be more focused than ever than the previous types of, than the previous way that we were doing it. Um, so to be more focused, this person will, you know, be checking on all of our facilities, uh, emptying the trash, making sure they're in good condition, especially if they're being rented. We have camp hosts that are scheduled to come on March through November, so they are going to help us with the weekends work, um, to keep, we were trying to make it so we could have a full works person do that, but that's tough sell to someone who was not hired to work weekends. Um, so now we have a good solution of someone who will be here Monday through Friday, has always been here Monday through Friday, has a great eye for detail, um, and then the camp host who can help us on the weekends, at least through the heaviest months. We think we have a good, um, solution without hiring an additional person.
Is the camp host a permanent person as well?
They are, they're not contracted, they'll be part time, right? Um, there's two people we hire, they live at the campground.
Oh, okay.
One person manages the front office, um, and then the other person is going to be responsible for some, some light maintenance and some cleaning, especially on the weekends.
They stay, they don't... Clarify.
So that's a paid position? They get free camping or what, or it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's pretty common for campgrounds.
Yeah.
It's very, very helpful in the past and these are two new people, but they've, they've got a lot of experience. Um, I am proposing that we grant all staff two percent increases on January first and then keep the three percent merit increase available at the time of employee evaluation like we have in the past. I, I just think our, our staff is worth it. We have a lot of people who have been here for a long time, um, just kind of, this year we only did three percent, um, so I think it's just appropriate to recognize the people that have, that have been here and are doing all this work for the village. We do have in the budget, um, an additional position for the police department. Uh, this is in addition to the cadet that was hired this year, or the cadet, the person who went through the cadet training and then became a police officer. This is an additional position. Um, since the passage of the levy was successful, um, we all know how long it takes to hire a police officer, um, so it's probably a good idea to get that posting out sooner rather than later and start that process.
Are we going to follow the same procedure we did last year with the cadet? Where we gave stipend, I think it was, to pay someone to come in, because I...
I'm probably getting somebody into the academy to make sure they're already full. So, I mean, that's why we got to start planning ahead a little bit more, if we're going to continue with that route, or if we might be lucky, if somebody's already commissioned, send them to the academy. But, yeah, that, that would be what I would like, because I, I believe that was one of the best things that we were to send to the police academy like that. Matt has some really good training, the dude, I've got some really good trainings up there, so, yeah, that's my, my goal, is that we could get him in, but I know that was your goal where Matt went, I think they're already full a little bit next year, and then they can say, oh, they're already full.
Was there anybody from the previous hiring rounds that was interested besides Matt now?
Yeah, we had a guy that we were interested in, he answered the police academy, he had the...
I just saw that was so successful this year, you know? I just saw that was so successful this year, you know? You did that and I know Campbell and us on council was saying, hey, let's give that stipend and see if that works and it seemed to work and, and here we're seeing now coming back. And so, I mean, if we can get that working in. But again, but trying to get him into an academy.
So how, how, if we want somebody in twenty twenty-six, can we reserve a spot without having a person dedicated for that spot? Like, yeah, you can say I want a spot in twenty twenty-six and then- Yeah. I say, what's, what's kind of the time process just about the person? Yeah, I mean, after they, even they submit and go through, you got background checks and different things like that. Like how long is that process to kind of get the, hey, this is the person we like, to get clearance to be ready for the academy? Is that like a one process?
If we put, if we posted it tomorrow, it would be thirty days before we'd actually get anybody in here to start looking at it. Cause they have to go through the National Testing Network and everything else that has to take the test. Then we set up the interview panel, uh, most, a lot of these people were on the interview. Jerry, she was on there. Uh, so then, once we get that done, then we start the background check and everything and hopefully they pass on that. And then we get it through the academy. So even if we posted tomorrow, we'd be lucky to get somebody started for maybe higher by February. And that would only be if we could get them in the academy in May. They would have to wait until the academy starts in May, uh, to even start.
And per Aaron's question, if we, if we told the academy, hey, we want you to reserve a spot for us. Would, do they do that? Like nah, if we fill up, we fill up.
No, they'd probably do that. They'd try to like get like a deposit on it, but yeah. And we could cancel, you know, cause there's always going to be somebody in line to get, to get in there. And fortunately, there's other academies too. Delaware has an academy, Westerville, um, uh, State Highway Patrol. The only with the State Highway Patrol, the State Highway Patrol is actually free to send them, but they have to stay there five days a week all night long. And if they have a family, that's kind of tough to do. And if they also have a full-time job, well, actually when we send them, they're getting paid, but they have to stay there all night, five days a week.
Yeah.
It's hard to do that to somebody that's got family. If it's a guy just, you know, out of college or something and doesn't have a family, it's, it's easier to do that. And the State Highway, not, not when you say the Patrol, they just do a different training than what we want our guys to do too. We want them more community-oriented type training.
Do we have to pass legislation to start the process in December, or is that something that they could go ahead and start now?
Um, I would be more comfortable if the budget was passed, but I don't see any reason why not, we don't start the process of getting it on the site and everything, take it down if we needed to.
Yeah, cause we saw the post-it and we go testing. Or we go to some of the people that we had during the interview last time, see if they're already hiring someone. I think what we got more to do.
I, I know December's that far off, but I mean, it might, if people have a break coming up next week and they're online looking.
Yeah, the problem is it's really, and now I'm projecting my experience onto this hiring process, very different. I just have generally not seen much hiring going on in December. People, a lot of vacations, a lot of slower, like, I, I feel like the hiring always like stops around Thanksgiving and starts again. And January, that's my, like again, projecting like my hiring onto the police, but I would assume it's very similar, that no one's, there's not a lot of activity in that period.
We've actually had a lot of people like call, say for-
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, posting, yeah, so I'm okay.
And everything else, it would be taking applications, going through, we have the people that are probably online.
So if you started tomorrow, the posting process, you, when, when would be the earliest you could post?
We posted tomorrow.
Oh, you have it ready to go for posting? Okay, perfect. I'm not saying-
But-
What?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I was just asking the question, I'm not. I guess from on that end, like they, it takes, um, they have like the testing and it's not like next week they'd be bringing people in for, um, that's what-
Cause the niggas can't post, right? As long as they're trained.
I don't, I don't think we wanna start that. Uh, I think we will lose that, uh, battle. Uh, if we, if we start going down that path, everyone will be paying more and we'll be losing more people. So I don't, I have no desire to do that. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why I was saying start that, it's a battle we don't start.
Thank you.
Um, and then the last point in that first position was, or, uh, first slide was, we do totally understand we need more staff. As we continue to grow, everybody's trying to do a little bit of everything. We know that's not sustainable over the long term. We know we need code enforcement. Um, we know we need a finance backup slash accounts payable type of person, maybe a little bit of HR as we grow. And then we also see a big need for an outreach type of communications position, someone to, that we do a lot of contractual work with. We hire people to take photos and videos and where we hear a lot of, um, not negativity, but we get a lot of feedback about how we could do better. Um, but it doesn't necessarily fall under anybody's targeted purview if that's what they're focusing each day. So it's kind of where we're leaning. Um, historically, we've, over the last couple of years, we've participated in the Morph C intern program, been great, they're wonderful. Um, however, it's such a short period of time that it feels like by the time you've got them introduced, trained up a little bit, they're getting ready to go. And they're also working on some final projects. So we might be looking into potentially posting an intern to get some departments help for a little bit longer term, maybe March through December. Someone that's a little bit more invested, still fifteen, twenty hours a week. Um, could be a part-time person, it could be an intern, we're open to either, uh, whatever fit we get. Um, as well as continuing focusing on what that communications type of person would be. Um, so there's a little bit of buffer in the budget to continue to fill that out. We don't expect hiring anybody January first. Um, but we wanna, kinda keep options open and, um, I think over the next couple of weeks, we'll land on exactly what we want that to look like next year. So twenty twenty-six and beyond, capital planning, this wasn't the most exciting discussion, um, but I think that's a good thing. Will be more exciting about our look back for the year. This is why Mr. Connolly's here tonight, um, and why I'm happy the PNF's here as well. We have several large projects coming up, um, either as a result of projects we're already doing, things that have, you can just see that need doing in the future, um, that are on a capital plan. But we don't necessarily have funding sources lined up for, and they'll be large projects. So building improvements for the people marketplace, finalization of Plaza, Bicentennial Park, the actual construction of it. Um, street planning that we do every year, street paving that we do every year. When we do finish acquiring the Raver Farm, what we do with those buildings, what we turn those into for the community. Chillicothe Street reconstruction, um, the sidewalks north and south, uh, the roads, the infrastructure. Every year we're gonna need to acquire vehicle acquisitions. Um, those get bigger and bigger and more expensive every year. We have a pool expansion that's been proposed, um, the reconfiguration of Passant Park, bike path expansions as opportunities come up and beyond. Uh, we don't wanna pay cash for these every year. Um, so we have our wonderful finance team here. Um, I'm gonna, if we don't have any more questions about the twenty twenty-five budget.
Though I do have a few more, five, um, I was wondering when the best time to ask them was. And then also it's probably good to introduce Mr. Connolly and like kind of, I'm not sure everyone is familiar. So, um, on the twenty twenty-five, uh, but, uh, what I would love to see, uh, is a slide that kind of takes the last five years of revenues and kind of grasp them along with the next five, uh, maybe overlaid with expenses and population. Uh, just to see, I, I know we said we get ten percent because we had ten percent. I'd love to see kind of how that's actually laid out a little bit. I know not every year is the same, um, but we do a lot of, here was our budget, here was our spend, here was our projected imbalance. It, it, it's good to also see like the year's progressions. So, um, slides are just like, I, I don't know if I need it at the most detailed level. Um, I don't even know if I need it on the fun level, but maybe on operating costs. So, uh, all the different operating costs, uh, like where does that total for the last three years? And where do we think it would go for the next three years along revenues, just so we can kind of see it. Because as we make decisions, that organizational structure, suggestion, if we're gonna hire someone, like how does that layer in, when does that layer in? And, uh, I know that that's part of long-term planning, um, but, uh, just kind of like, uh, those kind of thoughts on the forecast out along with like headcount of like, here's where we might add, you know? So this is step up is cause we're adding a headcount backup today, this is to add a HR. Um, and then, yeah, talking with you and talking with Mr. Hutchinson and the presentation we had, um, I don't know, three, four months ago. I, I think maybe it's worth the conversation on code enforcement a little more deep. Um, you know, but I understand we don't have a lot of the mechanisms to do that or the teeth to go after some of the code enforcement. And I even talked to Michelle a bit briefly on this, just to say, hey, listen, um, I get it, it's not your guys' wheelhouse. But what, would it, would it look like if we, you know, outsourced to a different legal service to be able to do it? I think we should at least size that as a budget item because, um, one, there's gonna be some return, you know, just on people. If, if people are violating it, we'll get some fines and back. And two, I really just wanna get into a situation where it's known that we don't, like, that we, we don't have the mechanisms to force. Cause that's just a really slippery slope, like, uh, what's the broken window theory, right? Like we gotta, we've gotta like not let people get out of compliance and realize that they can stay out of compliance. Um, I, I fielded a call in the last two weeks on someone that's out of compliance, asking like, can I stay out of compliance? No, clearly not. So, um, I think that you at least need to, as a council, consider. I, I, I think when Mr. Hutchinson and then came and presented that, it was like, wow, like we have all these things, but we don't do anything with it. Um, so that's the one area that I'm a little, I mean, just, if we size the cost of that, cause it could be a person, it could be a legal service. I don't know what we're missing to do it, but that piece, I think in twenty-five would be nice. Any other question on twenty-five before we go on?
On the hiring another police officer, would that require an vehicle? No, okay. Yeah.
Maybe some other equipment just on-
Sure.
Personal financing.
I was gonna say, just kind of going along the long-term plan, I know we talked, kind of getting that, did you say, extra staff members kind of finding out? You know, Mr. Hutchinson probably can add a little bit, just, we know what our growth's gonna be, kind of with the water tap, you know, kind of, we're maxed out. Once that new, um, modern sewer system gets built, as we said, the gates are gonna open with some of the projects that are, that are upcoming. Hutchinson probably would have a good idea, you know, of kind of that timeframe, I think. And so we might have a, a period here, three or four years for kind of pull build out for residential side. And then whenever that sewer plant gets up, I think then a lot of the other developments are gonna come, correct on my guessing with that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we're, this, this connection will be at our highest that we've ever been as far as development. We, uh, and then it will, it will actually, I had that kind of projected already, twenty twenty-seven is going to, we'll start to lose some of the ones that we have like garbage stations. Mass matter's been finishing up. Um, so it will drop down a little bit in twenty-seven, still more than we've ever had. Um, twenty-eight, yeah, twenty is going to be, um, potentially right now, maybe starting that one's on top.
And, and what's, what's interesting, right, is like with that, you know, curve, this would be a great place. And this is why I was thinking about like the legals, if we could get code enforcement, like where can we contract or outside service something? Because as those ebb and flows happen, the last thing we ever wanna do is overhire and we have to, you know, eventually cut back. Like that would be the last choice of anyone on this council. So anywhere we can find places to con, like, we don't, if we don't have a full need or a full staff, but, uh, kind of balance that out. That's where I'm kind of trying to think about, like where, where can we do that? Like, it probably doesn't make sense, like, uh, Renee backup, that's probably more, we wanna build that bench ring, you know? Anywhere we can do legal or, uh, I, I'm assuming though everyone that's really good at building, you know, is fully employed somewhere, cause yeah, so.
And if there's like a space where you can show, like, when you're talking about like communications, like where does that take from current staff members who are feeling like overwhelmed? Or, um, and show that, that need.
Sure. Yeah, it'd be nice to find, you know, somebody kind of maybe could do, find an intern or, you know, new position that could help, you know, leave a couple of staff members. And just started to have, um, handling some of that stuff, cause some of the communication that you get, you know, probably are complaining.
Yeah.
Have to take that off.
And, and I know you, this was literally your first slide, so I apologize. I just tried to see if, uh, I checked if it was on the paper. Uh, I didn't take this note. So tonight, we are having a nice detailed discussion, work session. Are you looking to have a first reading Monday?
The twenty-fifth, is that Monday?
That's Monday.
Yeah, it's back to back to back, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, so I guess, I guess just kind of thinking about like these requests we're making and everything like that, um-
I'm happy to do another short slideshow.
Yeah, it, it can be very narrow. It can be very much like, hey, you guys have questions on these topics, um, on Monday. Or, or, or better, uh, we could have the first reading and then maybe have the conversation at that work session and then have the second reading and vote on-
The ninth.
The ninth. Would that, would that fit the schedule without stressing anyone out? And I would assume that you guys don't have another meeting between now and then, this is that meeting, yeah. Well, this is like, yeah, yeah, no thanks.
They've seen this over and over.
Sorry. Uh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, well with that, um, David Connolly is a financial advisor, oh, with Rock Mill Finance. Um, he works closely with Renee, especially in the sonnet, on long-term planning, um, the notes and the bonds and all the larger financing issues. Um, so I'm gonna go sit back down and we'll have Renee and David to kind of help me with that, where we go next and how we, how we pay for it.
Sitting here in meetings, I hear about buying things left and right, it makes me really nervous when we spend cash on hand. And so, as we came in with David, my concerns and we decided to get it together with all staff, before we really made decisions, um, spent all our reserves. Come back for staff, we have no money, our coffers to pay for staff. So David and I had these long parties, and we came to meet with a lot of our staff members, unfortunately Haley was out on leave, uh, so she didn't get a chance to hear a lot of the discussion. Um, but he had some great ideas on doing short-term financing to pay for projects, um, that we were getting great dollars to back it up. So we did a short-term financing, he got the great dollars to pay that short-term debt off. Wanted to, the larger projects, we convert to bond at a late date, but again, just short-term financing was, where he was trying to help us. Wanted to, the larger projects, we convert to bond at the late date, but again, just short-term financing was, where he was trying to help us out, so.
Okay, hi.
All right.
Congratulations on passing the levy, let's, let's start there, that was the big, the big issue.
I believe in that too. I remember that discussion, we believed in that.
Uh, nothing here happens by accident, that's the first thing, first rule of thumb, this is one of the best, you know, well-planned out communities I've worked with, you guys have been working. For years to sort of get everything in the right order in anticipation of the changes that are happening. Tonight is another great example of that. Part of our, I think, because those, the smell of those.
I was smelling Kentucky Fried Chicken or something, I mean, it was, mm, smell really good here.
But, you know, part of, you know, part of the growth, uh, process is to, is to think ahead, you know, and, and, and look at what's coming. Uh, make sure that we're in touch with our capabilities today and how those capabilities might change five years from now, ten years from now. Uh, that list of capital projects is just going to continue to grow and, um, you have resources right now, thank God, we passed the, the income tax years ago. Uh, to put us in a position, but we, we're still thinking about how we might alter your financial, your taxation structure for the future. To manage the additional growth as it, as it comes into place. Uh, always remind everyone that borrowing is one thing, paying it back is another, right? So, we can borrow until we're full in the face, but we may not necessarily be able to pay it back. So one of our goals is to figure out before we start borrowing money. How we would pay it back. And then secondly, when we do borrow money, are we borrowing it for the right types of things in the, in the right types of ways? So when I met with staff, uh, we began talking about some of the projects, the capital needs of the, of the city, village, the village, city, I keep calling you guys the city. And one thing that was pretty clear to me is that, um, we need to go through a process of prioritizing some of these capital expenditures. Uh, so that it's really clear as to what we need to get to first. And then what, what items can we potentially either put as a contingency, if, you know, for example. If we're expecting a ten percent increase in our income taxes and it turns out to be fifteen percent. Are we able to then take that extra and get to some of our contingency type projects and deal with those on a cash basis? Uh, but that process requires us to identify first, what we think the capital projects might be, uh, might need to be, and then secondly, start to, you know. Prioritize those things that are most important to sustain the growth of the, of the community and secondly, those things that, uh, you know. That are just sort of enhance the overall quality of life of the residents of the village. So, um, that's likely going to be some of the things that we deal with. That's part one. Part two is the, it, it, you know, the ever-growing need to have staffing. Um, I wish I could tell you that you won't have staffing pressures, but, you know, this is just the beginning. Actually, when I first started working with you, it was just the beginning and it's not going to change for the foreseeable future. Uh, you'll continue to have staffing challenges, uh, uh, you know. The growth is doing right now, thank goodness, we haven't had any problems with Renee as the finance officer and John as the tax collector, but. We've got some pinch points that could create challenges if we don't build a deeper bench, uh, in those areas. And there are other areas as well in the city. Where we have to plan financially for enhancing or expanding the staffing support that we need without overcommitting. So, you know, one of the challenges is, you know, you're gonna have some ebbs and flows, but overall, it'll be a bit like the stock market. I mean, you're gonna have ups and downs, but long-term, you're gonna need people down the road. The question is, what's the smartest way to do that? Uh, how do we get people in now and maybe one person is floating? I think someone referenced. Having someone float, but as, as, as business sort of develops, commit that person to a single area and then repeat that. And we've, we've kind of laughed about your latest hires, you've got some pretty talented people that you brought in recently. Um, finding stars like this isn't exactly easy, so, uh, having, you know, having some time to try to identify people that, that can do multiple tasks. With the understanding that ultimately they might be able to fill a permanent position as the city grows would be a real, a real good idea. Um, so, you know, right now, I mean, first, uh, first thing, let me just tell you that your financial condition is spot on target. I mean, we're in great shape financially, the management has been incredibly well, uh, you know, we established that minimum balance concept where the general fund. Should stay at the right, at a certain number and then we could, we knew, once we were beyond that, we could set up money for the land acquisition fund. And do the, do all those things. So everything is falling in place the way we've sort of planned it out. It's just sort of the next stage, okay, what do we do next when it comes to capital planning, staffing, so the, the police levy was the next item to allow us to. Uh, enhance the police department, uh, and free up lending of the general fund, so we can deal with some, some other items relative to that. But there's even a bigger picture and that is, in the next few years, we'll be talking about what's the best way to continue, uh, with the tax that will grow. As the police budget grows, because right now that's your largest expenditure and I doubt that, that'll change for the foreseeable future, right? Yep?
So one way. Right, yeah, unless you stop going, which.
Maybe you will, I don't know, maybe at twenty five. Um, so the goal is to maybe at some point look at, uh, having an income, an income tax that, uh, is funding police instead of a property tax. Because the property tax, once you pass, the increase is flat from that point forward unless there's another big increase in the tax base. Um, so, looking at what I call inflationary adjusting revenues to support the growth of the police department. Will continue to take pressure off the general fund. And there's some concepts around how we might also potentially include a little bit of a larger percentage for capital purposes. Um, because capital investment tends to grow exponentially as your population grows and so what we see coming in today may not necessarily be sufficient. Down the road, but these are all things that I'm already thinking about, we're talking about and sort of. Picture types of things that, uh, that we're trying to make sure that there's a, a general plan sort of written out for how we get where we need to go. Uh, Renee, is that what you're hoping?
Yeah, yeah, for the more.
Okay, great, great. Uh, so again, right now, all I can tell you is that we're, we're right on target for everything that we planned for, had the police levy not passed. Conversation would be a tad different, uh, but we're in good shape. Oh, I should add, uh, we are, Renee and I met today with the county auditor to. Discuss, there's a unique opportunity for the village to restructure the, the bonds that were issued to pay for the current swimming pool. Um, those bonds are paid, uh, are getting paid off in twenty thirty nine, I think. Because of the valuation increase, uh, you're currently collecting one mill in property taxes. If, um, if we didn't do anything at all, the county auditor could reduce that one, if one mill, because the property values have gone up so significantly. Um, and looking at that, those bonds that are outstanding during the five percent interest rate right now, we can refinance those bonds. Um, and shorten the payoff period and take it from twenty thirty nine to twenty thirty two. So lop off seven years of that bond issue, but it, it, the county auditor would have to agree to keep the tax rate at one mill for us. The conversation today with her went incredibly well, she said, it sounds like a great idea. Uh, where we stand today, that would save about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest that's currently being paid by your property taxpayers, because it's a voting property tax. Uh, bond issue. So that's the first advantage. The second advantage is we know that there's an additional pool project. That's coming down the road, uh, by, by saving some money on that particular bond issue, we can rededicate, if you will. That the, the savings to help support the expansion of the new pool project. So, uh, we have a, you'll, I'll be back to talk about the process of refinancing those bonds and trying to execute on that strategy. But part of our, you know, the whole plan is to try to utilize the tools we have available to us to help us get some of the other things done. Without just paying cash for everything, we put ourselves in a tough place financially overall.
And, and Mr. Conley, apologies for this, uh, just want to make sure I fully appreciate and understand. So generally speaking, we use you on a fairly regular basis, I, I think we've met four or five times. Um, and you helped out with everything. Is this a specific scope of work project or is this just ongoing, uh, project? And if it is a specific scope of work, um, can we, can I, could we, because we, the council, see what that is? Just, I want to make sure, because there's some very specific things that we're asking for, that, uh, I know we use, utilize you for other things, right? Like, uh, just bounce ideas off of stuff, but more, uh, like where the deliverables are, because, like, that's, that's kind of my generic question, rather, right there. Like, exactly what's different about this than some of the other conversations we have?
This is all the same conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, there, um, so there, you know, it's, it's sort of a. An overall financial, basically I refer to it as like a taxation policy.
Okay.
Um, why are you taxing the way that you taxed? How are you taxing? Then, what's the best way to use those taxes to execute the serving? Process of serving your, your taxpayers, your residents. So everything that falls under that concept. Uh, is how I'm engaging and have been engaging with your staff. Uh, it, it's, it's built up from a concept of are you approaching taxation from the perspective of trying to be sustainable? Long-term, number one, uh, because you don't want to just go back and ask for taxes every three years, just because you're a poor planner. Uh, the second is, is the way you're approaching taxation fair for the types of people paying taxes in your community? Are we approaching it from a perspective of, are we, how are we looking at? How, how property taxes impact residents, for example, versus income taxes?
Sure.
Uh, who we have the proper mix there. The third is, do we have, you know, here's a simple question that most governments can't answer. And that is, do I, are we sitting on too much cash? Like, our general fund has four million dollars, and it, should that be two million dollars or should it be ten million dollars? Uh, and how do you make that determination? What's the right number to use? And so, in answering that question, for example, if you have four million and I say to you, you only need two million, and that's, and I've already said that. In a previous meeting and doing the analysis for the, the balance, the question becomes, well, now that we have two million more than. We need to be financially sound, how do we spend that two million dollars? What's the best use of those to make you? And that comes from just simply creating some guidance around what, where your priorities are. Uh, based on what's, what's happening within the city, operations, is it capital, is it a mix of those things? So, I'm involved with staff to help guide those conversations, to do whatever analysis that we need to do, you know.
Perfect.
Yeah, you talk about projections, so I would sit with Renee and help her develop projections around flow.
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think what I'm getting at, and perfect, that's kind of how I understood it, so great. Um, I think that we, as a council, uh, would probably be served well. To have more, some of the direct interaction with you, um, and as kind of what you're working on, on a regular basis and. Not, not because of a question, because we're trying to learn and we go and make decisions, um. Uh, you know, we're, we're gonna have some executive session today, like, having that understanding and that groundwork of where, you know, that long-term. Thing is, and don't get me wrong, Renee and Haley and the, the staff do a great job informing us, but just another voice, I think that maybe. As we get into kind of this detail, this long-term capital planning and all these items, I think that. Uh, I, I for one, find, you know, a few, like, even if they were executive session with you, I don't know how that would fall, what that would fall under, so let's pretend like it doesn't exist, but. Um, but even just some more interactions with you and learning to kind of about how this is gonna look. So when we make decisions, uh, because we're, we like spending, uh, money, uh, it's nice, people, people are a lot happier with us when we, uh, build parks. Um, having that kind of guidance or thought in the back of our heads, I think would go a long way for, at least for me. Um, so if we, if, maybe as we turn the page over to twenty five, we think about how, even if that's a separate scope of work for us. Um, you know, a more narrow of, hey, we want, keep doing what you're doing with Renee, keep doing what you're doing with Haley, but we want this kind of. Uh, kind of deliverable of, here's where I see your strengths, your weaknesses, your strengths, like, I don't know, all that stuff, like, that would be beneficial to us, I think. If, I, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
Yeah, I think in our conversations during some of our PNF meetings, it's the, the, to hear like the benchmarking. What we're doing versus, we need to our size, he's, that's a really valuable conversations around that piece of it too, it's like, are we? Are we being reasonable? Are we being ridiculous or whatever?
I would love to include, because, uh, the things I do with staff, I think you all would enjoy some of that as well. And it sort of depends, some of my clients, you know, they turn, leave everything to staff and they report, and others. Want to be a part of those sessions, so they don't have to be executive session, it's good information, I think you'd be surprised to listen to the things that we talk about.
Public needs, just like the pottery finance, like, if you understand that, you can tell your constituents how you've saved them money and how you did a really smart thing. And how you're protecting taxpayers, because like you said, the property evaluation taxes are changing, income taxes, if, if you understand that, you're gonna be able to communicate that better and make better decisions. Like, I think that you should all understand.
And I, I mean, I'll tell you, I, it would be no cost difference, I mean, just to have more people sitting while I'm talking and showing stuff is, doesn't cost me any more time or money, so. It's just a matter of your availability to, to, to join sessions, uh, but it's fascinating things that, that we go through and comparisons. The community comparisons is really insightful, where you can see where, how you stack up to other communities, just that's. One of the ways I, you know, sort of develop some guidelines around where we might be going, based on how we're changing relative to the other communities in central Ohio. So I think you would find it enlightening.
One, it's unique that we are growing, we're in large communities that are not our standard. And I think that's a unique situation we have here, where if you look around, see, I thought I read somewhere that there's only a few communities that are actually growing in population, and we're one of those areas. We have that unique opportunity that we, as you said, the income tax and the property tax, we gotta find that balance that works for our community.
I mean, one of the things that really makes you guys a little bit different too is that frankly, you've been anticipating these changes.
Right.
So we've already put sort of the, the, the financial infrastructure, if you will, in place for the, this, this stretch of our growth. Uh, so we're not working from behind, we're actually handling.
Yeah, we've been trying to be proactive, you've tried to do that, being proactive in this, in this finances as well, instead of reactive as much.
That's right.
Reactive, and we're chasing ourselves, like you said before.
You know, the, the, the walk of utilities, you know, the decisions around making a change to the utilities was probably a, a good decision. You know, because it was, it would have been tough for us to try to support that and everything else that was, that's happening, so. Um, you know, we're, I think, we're ahead of the curve relative to starting, starting out without, you know, we don't have a lot of debt, we've been very conscientious. Conscious about paying it off, you know, pretty early, and not going, you're not going into debt or things that aren't really contributing to the growth of the community. So anyway, there's a lot of good stuff to, to kind of go back over, recap with the, with council, showing where we were versus, you know, kind of the growth pattern. And, uh, and how we're, how we're managing, so, uh, we'll, uh, do whatever we have to use.
Awesome. Um, I don't have any other questions, sorry. All right, uh, personal finance, do you have any other question?
She was asking about the police landing replacement.
Um, so I guess you guys would adjourn, yeah, you would adjourn.
Yeah, so, uh, no further, this is a little graphic in our meeting, and we don't need any other meetings. Holy anniversary.
I was gonna say, we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to plan anything, because usually we talk about, so we don't have to plan anything.
We'll get a hold of you in a couple of weeks to talk about first of the year, type of thing.
Okay, all right, so Jay, I think you would discuss, like, when you mentioned the tax policy, and we have new types of general fund policy, but we want to get more in depth with it, so. That was the plan last one, but then, stuff happened, so, you know.
So, first off, thank you guys so much for coming tonight and doing all the hard work, but also, obviously, thank you guys so much for being on the committee. Uh, you guys are all longstanding, I, I, I started with you guys, so, uh, it is very appreciated of the council that we have, you know. Volunteers on these committees, we know it's thankless, so, uh, this is your thank you. Uh, thank you guys very, 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 very much, so. You guys can hang if you want, uh.
They get their cookies and they leave.
Thank you.
Melissa's been on personal finance board. I didn't know Melissa was already on. I, I, she, she, she was like the first volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, Mr. Dryer, just to clarify, you want to call back to order or?
Your, your, that was more outlawed.
Okay, cool. So without objection, um, the agenda on is approved and I would welcome a approval on the minute for the council to write a meeting on November 11th, 2024, which would have been last Monday.
Still move.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Harriman.
Same.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we have no visitors. Um, have no further discussion items. So we'll move to a period of unfinished business. Uh, second reading ordinance 25, 2024, accepting an annexation petition of 331 six, seven acres from Jerome Township, Union County, Ohio, to the village of Plain City, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
One motion or declare emergency first?
Any motion to approve what that question of emergency?
To approve ordinance 25 dash 2024 with also declaring an emergency.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Second reading resolution, uh, motion pa, ordinance passes zero. Uh, second reading resolution 52 dash 2024, amending the posted speed limit on Plain City, Georgesville Road to 25 miles per hour.
Motion to accept, uh, resolution 52, 2024. Second.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Uh, resolution passes six to zero. Uh, I'm moving to a period of new business.
Just a clarification on that. Real quick, just a question. So, um, that's something we can change. The speed limit sign up after 30 days. Would we do that or that?
Resolution going to affect.
Okay, thanks. Sorry.
Nope, no problem. First reading ordinance 26 dash 2024, hiring, establishing the terms and conditions of employment Plain City Chief of Police and waiving the second reading and declaring emergency. Um, maybe a brief explanation before. This is ever uncomfortable, kind of aware what's happening. Cool. Then maybe not.
We're happy to have, uh, Chief McKee in his continued service.
Yeah, welcome back.
Thank you.
Try to get ready.
Motion to wait the second reading first for ordinance 20 dash 2024.
Second.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
So then.
Motion to approve ordinance 26 dash 2024 and declaring emergency. Get everything. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
First reading resolution 53 dash 2024, authorizing the donation of abandoned bicycles.
Is this from, this from today?
The timing of this, I mean, it wouldn't be somebody who can recover your bicycle.
So does anybody have any questions on that though? Cause basically with these bicycles, are bicycles that we are like found or turned into? We need to keep them two or three years and nobody claims them, but I can, God knows, but you could just off, like give them two, like a country college.
Yeah. You, you, I have no questions or.
Does it cost me more?
Yeah, I have no problem with whatever you want to do with these bicycles. Yeah.
Maybe say one.
Just for an emergency.
Or I guess just park them all right there.
Someone will come take them.
Hey, just FYI, Aaron texted me, said it's next door.
Drive home.
All right.
You do have to pay the.
So I would now, all right, so just so everyone's aware, there are, uh, six executive sessions, but we will not be coming back with any, um, actions. These are all just individual conversations that we're gonna have. Uh, I kind of prefaced this the other day about wanting to talk about, uh, salaries of individuals and where we are in the market. Um, the issue is you cannot enter one executive session and talk about more than one person. So we will be entering an executive session, we'll be exiting, be entering, we'll be exiting, we'll be entering, we'll be exiting. We will keep detailed notes, Mr. Dryer, so you don't have to hang. Uh, we are not inviting any members of staff to this discussion. Um, it's just gonna be the council and mayor, of course. So I would welcome a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Ohio Revise Code, section 121 dot 22G1, to consider the compensation of a public employee.
And to enter executive session.
Second.
To make it easier, Mr. Harriman will always motion and Ms. Ferguson will always second. And then I will always call the roll. Mr. Harriman.
Oh. Motion to enter. Yes.
You have to vote.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Sands.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson. Mr. Daly.
Yes.
And I'll do the time. I will.
No, I will do it in order. It's gonna be in order. It's gonna be unanimous every time. It's gonna be six, nine.
Okay, so 7:46 we entered.